I would like to bring to
Wait on it, will you? Okay, I didn't see the light switch, I'm sorry.
Okay, Frank.
Sure, cameras.
Whatever you want. I don't care. I'd like to bring to order the regular council meeting for Monday, December 17th, 2018. Rule call, please. Mr. Lauer.
President.
Mr. Steinbach.
President.
Mr. Arquardt. Here.
Mr. Burquist. Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Ball.
Present.
Mr. Cozer.
Here. If we could please rise for a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes for the regular council meeting held December 10th, 2018.
So moved.
Anybody have any comments, changes, deletions?
I do. Under payroll and bills, I did not make the motion to move payroll and bills. I believe it was Mr. Cozer.
It was.
It was the other Frank.
I was going to let you have credit for it, Frank.
No, no, I never moved it. I've never moved it.
Okay. So other than that amendment, is there anything else? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Of state.
And we have one. Next is special reports, and still none? Still none? All right. Next item on the agenda is audience comments. This is an opportunity for anyone in the audience to come forward and have their five minutes of time to discuss any item that is not on this evening's agenda. Is there anyone who would like to do so? No one rushing the podium, so we'll say no. Next is unfinished business, which there's also none. And that moves us to new business. And first item on new business is a request from Mr. and Mrs. Courtney for relief from buffering requirements at 214 Valley Brook Road, I think better known as St. Petersburg Center.
Just so that we're all on the same page, as councils are aware, we're showing two separate paths with regard to the center. A year ago, last July, there was a decision by the Construction Appeals Board that directed that to give the Courtney's 90 days to submit a plan to be approved or authorized at that point the demolition of the building. Since that time, the Courtney's have been pursuing putting the plan together. We still do not have a plan that has been reviewed by the Planning Commission yet. So towards that end, one of the things we have done recently is to accept proposals for the demolition of the building. In light of the fact that Mr. and Mrs. Courtney would like to be able to submit a site plan for review in January, we have postponed taking action on that bid award until the second meeting in January. So in the meantime, the plan design for the building has changed. It is no longer a two-story building, but will be a one-story building, and it'll be a one-story building with a pitched roof. And there is a provision within side the zoning ordinance that says that if in fact you have a pitched roof on a building, that you are entitled to either a buffer area reduction or floor area increase not to exceed 10% of the original proposed floor area. So...
Well, it doesn't exactly say that. It says building roofs in all other commercial and industrial districts.
Right.
Is this, is this building in that? Because I don't have, why isn't it buildings in a non-residential district?
I can't tell you.
Or C, it says buildings in a non-residential district shall, and it goes on. Then it says in a multifamily development in their space. Then it says building in a town center. And it says building roofs in all other commercial and industrial districts.
And that would be the...
What is this up?
General commercial. So this district does qualify for that relief. What is required in this zoning district is a 15-foot buffer. If in fact you have a 15-foot buffer, what it does is it does not permit the developer to be able to access the back of this building because you're about with an 11 and 1/2-foot area, and you need at least 13 feet to have a one-way access to the back of the building. What has been asked for is a reduction in the buffer of 12 feet, in which we've reduced the buffer to three feet. In our opinion, that's excessive and goes beyond that which is needed to be able to develop the site. What we are suggesting is that the relief that should be given is that the buffer be reduced to 10-foot, which leaves 16 and 1/2 feet between the building and the buffer, which would allow for the construction of a one-way road to the back of the building. The other thing we're suggesting is that ingraining the relief that council does not relieve the developer of actually planting a 15-foot landscape area, but that five-foot of that actually be onto the township property, so that there is in fact a 15-foot area that is, that is being created.
So from the building to the landscaping buffer, it'll extend an extra five feet to the township property?
It would extend five foot, if you look where that 10-foot buffer is labeled, it would extend five foot back in addition onto the township property.
So those round things back there are plantings?
Yes.
This is the back of the, the back of the building?
Yes, this is the back of the building.
Towards the trail, yes.
Paul, can you go back to the photos of the building existing?
Mm-hmm.
So the top, so in the redesign then, the roof would be essentially level with the road, the driveway in the back then? Is that what I'm understanding?
A little higher.
A little higher, okay. And the parking would be where, in the front?
The parking would be, as shown on the drawing, the parking would be in the front, it would be in the back. In fact, it's, that's a question that we still don't have an answer to, is whether there's adequate parking on the site. One of the things that has not been determined yet is what the use of the building's going to be, and those uses determine parking requirement. So it's still not clear to us, as we haven't seen a site plan yet that indicates the uses as to whether or not the parking is adequate.
How many square feet will this building be?
It's approximately 6,800 square feet.
How much?
They're proposing approximately 6,800 square feet.
So it won't have to have a sprinkler system?
Not necessarily, but that is not the determining factor.
It may, it may need, and again, we don't have a site plan to be able to review, so it's difficult to say. But there, one of the ways that when you have buildings that are tight, if you can't get access to all sides, that we have permitted people to sprinkle buildings as opposed to having access.
And that's why I'm asking, because...
Yeah, and it's not clear to us that you're...
Fire trucks accessing the rear of that during a fire would be very difficult.
Yes.
Is that why it's, that's why you're recommending what you are?
Well, I think it's, it's the minimum reduction that is needed to be able to allow the site to develop, yes, that's...
Okay.
So to clarify, the traffic will go one way, and it will drop down or come up out of that lower entrance, lower part of the building, because the building itself will be, as Mr. Curry said, kind of below the level of the road.
I think what was, what was, and the developer here, they can answer this question, but what I think we have seen is that, you know, this is above the Valley Brook side, that you would come up here, go around here, and...
Well, that was the rest of my question. Is there enough circulation in the front of the road all the way up in the front?
The, I think the answer is yes, but again, we haven't seen...
You haven't seen the site plan?
The site plan, so, until we see that.
Okay. So anyone else on council have any other comments?
We've done this in one instance, excuse me, one instance that I can recall, and that would have been the building that we had a pitched roof and we allowed, I don't remember whether square footage increase or if it was...
It was a buffer area.
Yeah.
And it was a buffer along Willhede. Instead of it being 10 feet, I think it was six.
Which building was that?
That's because of that lot was real narrow.
That was weird, tight, irregular shaped lot.
But I think you're right, though. I think that the reason you get that relief is that it has a pitched roof on it.
Well, that was an element of this question.
So at this point, we need to approve this so they can continue their plans?
Yes. What, the intent is that this would be on the January 9th meeting of the Planning Commission. Submittals for that meeting will be due with the Planning Department on, by January 2nd.
Okay.
Do we make a motion?
Mr. Courtney?
Why don't we, why don't I make a motion?
Go ahead.
See if it passes, then we don't have to... I make a motion that we grant the owners of the property, Mr. and Mrs. Courtney, five feet of relief from the township buffer requirement, on the condition that the new structure has a pitched roof, and subject to the other condition that Mr. Lauer mentioned about going into the landscaping into our, into our...
I'll second.
Go to Monica, the second Monica. All right. So anyone from the Courtney's want to come up and talk?
If you recall, my name's Pamela Anck. I'm, I represent Mr. and Mrs. Courtney in regards to getting this project underway. And I believe Mrs. Courtney has brought with her some plans. I understand what your motion is right now. I was hoping that you would be willing to take a look possibly at what her, at what her plans were, and because there, she was trying to anticipate some other issues that had been raised at meetings that we have had. So she actually had drafted some plans. I'm going to let her take the floor because she...
If you could just identify yourself.
Hi, I'm Susan Courtney.
Thank you.
What I'm...
He's trying to get, that's...
My new wet.
No. It's coming from up the plug-in.
Yeah, that's the right way.
I have smaller, I have a smaller set, if that would help.
He just has to get the camera located.
Yeah, it's not zooming in and out for some reason.
Did you break it?
Yeah, I think we broke it.
There we go.
There was something.
There's something.
You know what?
There, wait, there's something, what's happening now?
Just some cookies.
That's a doggy box.
For some reason, that's...
I think you're zoomed out.
No.
Here we go.
Yeah, the pro is here.
Do we have a secret button or page, or is he actually paying attention?
Paying attention.
He broke it.
Microscopic view of the carpet.
Cookies, dude.
We're sleeping back there, door to door.
And it's a game, or the joystick just...
Okay. Mrs. Courtney, you're on.
After talking with the architect, we first off decided that we probably would be better off with a hip roof. It would be more attractive, a shingled hip roof. We both felt it would blend in better, look nicer, and she was of the opinion that it was less maintenance. So we, we changed to a hip roof. Obviously, we're down to one story. The bottom would be the front looking from Valley Brook, and the back on the top would be the south side facing the trail. What we're proposing is we would have a six-foot wall, and from the top of our wall to the trail is, to the center line of the trail is approximately 27, 28 foot. So we felt we could screen that, and if you were walking down the trail, I really don't see how you would really, you'd see the top of the roof, but you really wouldn't see anything else. And I think with the, with the right shingle, the right color, I think it would just kind of blend in and look maybe more natural. So I have another one. I can move it. So this, as you pull into the center, the bottom, the west elevation is what you would see.
These are side elevations?
Yes. And as you can see, we have on the bottom, I showed the wall, which would be concrete bin type of wall. The plantings would be on top, and we would have enough room to, actually, it would be nice because we would have a lot of room for a fire truck or any type of safety equipment that needed to come in. We would also have enough room to put in a driveway and a possible loading zone. But I have not had the chance to speak to Ed about that, and I think that's something that you would have to approve. But I think it would work. I've gone through the code, and what I understand, it would work. I don't know if you have the width on a loading zone?
I don't have it right here in front of me, but are you talking about a loading zone on the trail side of the building?
Yeah, on the back side.
We'd have to see a plan to be able to judge whether or not it needs the ordinance.
Okay. It's hard to draw a plan when I don't know how much room we're going to have.
Well, I think at this junction, which is in front of us this evening, is the request of the buffer. So I think that's, we'd want to concentrate the focus right now, because then now you can proceed with your plans, knowing that, what the limitation is as far as the buffer.
Yes, that's what we're looking for.
So I guess I'm going to ask you, do you have an issue with our reduction in the buffer from what you requested to what we're recommending?
Well, I mean, obviously, what I requested would work better for me. I, you know, I don't know what else to say at that point. Obviously, that's going to work better, but they would both work.
But you still feel you'd be able to work within that particular limitation?
I think so.
That would pretty much depend on the...
You're going to have to identify yourself.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
I'm sorry. We're having issues with that today.
That would pretty, that would pretty much depend on the loading, unloading issue, if we could get that answered. The way I see it, it just makes it, the area that's, right now is the area that you decided to not redo the lease on. It's actually paved as we speak. The weeds, I have some pictures, they're three or four foot tall, it's just not maintained. Why not make that pretty and put it in grass and trees and shrubs? We all win, we get a safer area to get fire trucks around. You can't access it from any place with stepping off the trail itself, so why leave it look like it does now? Let's just clean it up and get it all done at 112 street. I'm willing to take all the old asphalt up, put it in grass, that'll give you about 16 feet of total grass.
You put that right there.
Do you want to go on that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can you do that, Paul? We can do it.
Did you say we can do it?
Yeah. Oops, well, you had it.
It's just reset.
So what are you suggesting?
This existing construction fencing is close to the line, it's probably within six inches of foot, I have a survey, but I'm pretty close. If you take all this, you have about seven foot of existing grass right here towards the edge of the trail, not the center line, towards the edge. We take this area from here to roughly here, I believe, is 20, 21 feet. It's not accessible, it's of no use for being ugly, so why not breed it up? And we line the trees along here, three feet of which will be on our property, and I believe it would be seven, like seven feet of actual trees before you let the grass. Now, I had a more comprehensive, so to speak, for lack of a better word, a mild treason here, but a couple people said it might be not keeping with the trail being a wild type, almost a wild, natural shot. So I guess the question is, would you want a bunch of more trees in here, or would you be accepting the plan we have and putting the rest of this in grass? It would be your decision. Would you, this area to the right is another, you can barely see it on this picture, but there's a wide out area, one of the few existing trails, where you have a couple benches and a voice guard heading, be a retention area, which is, I don't know what's...
I'm going to ask Ed because...
So this side, that's that side for arresting the place from anybody's...
Within this picture, where is these, where are these kind of proposed lines?
Let me use this. So Ed's saying this is approximately the property line. His, the Courtney's request is to have three feet of that buffer on the building side of the fence, and the remaining buffer...
12 feet.
12 feet on township, all entirely on township property. And that's, that's a decision that council...
And the direction council has given us previously is that we're not to, to encumber the township's property with Mr. and Mrs. Courtney's development. Having said that, what I'm suggesting is that you extend that landscaping five foot onto this property as opposed to 12 foot onto this property.
So from where that fence line is, five feet from there would be trees and so forth?
Yes. And what I would agree with Mr. Courtney on is that at some point, we need to go in and on our property rectify this situation with regard to the asphalt net and restore it.
All right, well, let's get back to focus because I wasn't finished. Where is this wall that was being talked about?
Pretty much right along that fence line?
Three foot, three feet out.
Probably towards the end of the support structure here.
No, on the other side, the other side.
It would be on the Courtney's side of the property line.
I guess the issue is basically that loading and unloading issue, we're trying to find a space for it.
It doesn't necessarily have to be on that side, it could be in the back of the building as well.
Or in the end.
And my guess is that's...
The, the, the...
And my guess is that's where it's going to need to be, because otherwise you won't be able to get around the building.
I guess part of the reason is we have wider, instead of 11 or 12 feet, we have a little bit wider halfway, it's just more convenient. And not that it's the end of the world, but is it, I just don't see it as a big encroachment to make the place look better anymore, so...
With 16 and 1/2 feet as what's being requested, you still would not be able to have a loading zone on the side of the building, you'd never be able to get around it.
That's what, that was going to be my question. You're trying to make space for two vehicles, potentially a large truck and another car to go by? It doesn't, there's not enough?
I don't think there's enough room personally, but...
I don't think it works there. It'd be better on the eastern side of the building.
Well, if you have eight feet, that's, that's the maximum width for a truck.
But I think what we're saying is there has to be room for another vehicle to go by if the truck is there loading or unloading.
That's what we would have, we'd have enough re, room to get by.
Couldn't you just put the loading dock on the...
Well, these are really Planning Commission's...
Yeah, yeah, this is really getting into...
Sort of design.
Design issues, what we're concentrating on this evening, I'll try to refocus this back to your request for a reduction in the buffer, and I'm still trying to get an answer if what we have proposed, you're satisfied with. Because that's, that's the vote that we have right now, is to go with the buffer that we have recommended.
From the township staff.
From the township side. So...
All right, I said, can I call the questions?
What's that?
Can I call the questions?
Sure. Yeah.
I want to propose an amendment.
An amendment?
A motion.
What would your amendment?
A motion?
Yes.
What do you want to amend?
My amendment would say that this is good for one year, that the, until, you got one year to do the site plans and the building plans, and one year to start construction, otherwise we're...
I don't want any...
But Mr. Ball, I'm going to disagree with you because we've been at this for a long...
I know, that's what I'm worried about.
And my point is going to be failing to have an approved plan in front of the Planning Commission in January, my intent is to come back to council at the January 28th meeting and get authorization to proceed with the demolition.
I just want some limit on the thing so we don't end up with another 10-year special.
No, I, my, it's your motion, so...
No, I understand what Dave's saying, but I, I think if the plan, if the plan goes in commission and it gets approved, then it gets approved.
And it's done.
And if it doesn't, then it doesn't.
At some point, construction's got to start. We're going to be right where we are.
And come January 28th, failing this plan being approved by the Planning Commission, it's our intention to take action on the bids for the demolition. That will be the last day those bids will be valid.
The consequence of what David then is implying, if it were to be approved by the Planning Commission, what is the calendar, would be required?
Construction.
Construction, one year. Site plans approved by the Planning Commission are good for a year. So we need to get their permits and get the job done.
Right, but you have, your building permit's also good for a year, right?
Correct.
And once work starts on the building, it has to continue.
But you have to get your building permit within one year of the site plan approval, right? So, so in theory, you could get your site plan approval on January 2nd of 2019.
January 9th.
Or January 9th, and then you could wait until January 8th of 2020 to apply for your building permit, right?
Technically, you can, but I think that part of our Planning Commission decision will include some calendar, some times to get some significant work done.
I think you guys can see where we're headed here. We, you know, if this thing is going to proceed forward, we wanted to proceed forward.
Well, can I add something? On November 11th, I turned in seven sheets of site plan done by Barton and Associates along with Stormwater Management that we had done by a PE in Peters Township, and we still haven't received comments back on that, and I have emailed asking for them.
That's true, and you got the planning comments, I'm waiting for Gable's comments.
Okay, but it's not that we haven't done a site plan, we've, actually, we've turned in like our fifth, but we turned one in on November 11th, seven sheets.
We were unaware of that, so...
Yeah, and I just, I mean, this, because you're talking about...
Yeah, and I just, I mean, this, because you're talking about, you were mentioning dates. I think you were talking about January 2nd. And I mean, we're running kind of up against the clock. If we don't, if they don't have comments, that's really kind of unrealistic on, on even to expect it to be done by January 2nd. I mean, they'll, they will endeavor, and they have, as you are well aware, as soon as they've gotten comments, they've, over the, at least, over the...
Here we go.
Since, since the charges have been resolved, we've been, I think the, the, I think they've been working together pretty well, but you have to be realistic on the times. You can't give them comments and expect them to...
We've been very realistic on the time.
Well, but you can't give somebody comments and expect it to be done in three days. Is that, would that be acceptable?
What are you asking for?
I'm gonna defer to Mrs. Courtney on that. If you, how long is it gonna take you? If you get comments back, how long do you need?
Well, I, that's hard to answer because I don't know what the comments are gonna be.
Right. I think that depends on how extensive they are.
After, we went to a meeting in early December or late November, and the comment, what we talked about was this. And from what I understand, we were supposed to resolve this before we moved forward with the comments of the site plan. Is that...
At least the Gateway engineer's final comments.
That's what I understood.
We have, January 2nd is when plans are due and to be considered on the 9th. We have sat down with the Cortneys on numerous occasions. To this date, we don't even know what the uses are in the building, let alone what the site plan looks like, so.
Well, once again, if you...
Do we need the engineering comments back before they can file a site plan and go to plan?
We definitely need those back as soon as we can so we can get those comments to them and see if they can put a plan together and get in.
I think the answer would be yes, Mr. Lewis.
Ten days upon receipt of engineering's...
They're not gonna be able to get comments addressed with the holiday coming up. I can't imagine engineers anymore next week.
Well, Ed, why don't we follow up with Gateway on that issue? We're gonna stick to our timetable at this juncture. And we have a motion and a second at this time.
Which is not contingent on the timetable.
No, the motion.
That's correct.
Yeah. Right, Frank?
Right.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Is anyone else in council with any comments? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That is seven to zero with the setback asked proposed. All right. Next item on the agenda is ordinance repealing Chapter 206, Section 206-4, map of permitted hunting areas.
Mr. Chairman, since we beat this issue to death at several meetings ago, I'll make a motion that we adopt ordinance 832 repealing Section 206-4 of the Peters Township Code of Ordinances entitled Map of Permitted Hunting Areas.
Based on the fact that we can't find the map and...
Does anyone else want to continue beating the dead horse?
No.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That is seven to zero. Next is, on the agenda, is awarding a bid for the construction of the East McMurray Road Streetscape Project Yippee Yippee IA.
As part of the 2018 budget, there was an appropriation of $325,000 for the construction of a Streetscape project along East McMurray Road. What's indicated on the drawing that is being projected is the location, proposed locations for the standards that will appear. The standards are in fact electrified, and they will be lit from, from the bottom so that the banners will stay lit in the evening. In addition to that, there is power on each of those poles so that in fact the township wanted to invest in, as I did display, you can do that on these poles as well. We got three bids. The low bid was $278,580. So it's within the budget. We have contacted the property owners, and for the most part, I think we still have, what, one outstanding? Two, two outstanding where we need to get permission to locate the poles. And lacking that, we would just adjust the locations of the, of the poles that are proposed. The one thing that I will tell you that I think we're, we're going to have to spend some time on as these standards go in is coming up with a policy with regard to what's going to be displayed on those standards and how often they're gonna be changed and things like that. Because I would anticipate that these would be changed out by the Public Works Department, and it will take time, and it isn't something that we want to be doing on a, a extremely frequent basis. So there needs to be some standard.
We'll just address that.
Yep.
All right.
I make, I make a motion that we award the bid for the Streetscape to J5 Construction for $278,580.
Second. I can't believe that Mr. Park was to turn it in for a second.
Well, I just wanted to say Mike Tomlin says the standard is the standard. Thank you, Mike. But no, I'm happy that this is finally, it's been a long, a long process, and I think it's going to be a nice addition to the township, so. Any further comments?
Yes.
Yep.
I agree with Mr. Park, but it will definitely improve the current appearance of that area. The local businesses in the area will definitely benefit because it's an improvement. And I'm 100% behind the development of the Township Center. However, I think the timing is wrong. I think that we don't really know what the Township Center is gonna look like, and I think that we might be putting the cart before the horse and dressing up the Streetscape before we know what's going to develop in the area. So while I support the plan in general, I think the timing's off, which is why I'm going to be voting no. I think the money could be spent elsewhere. And this is consistent with my opinion from the very beginning.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Nay.
That sounds, unless I heard incorrectly, six, one. Next is resolution amending the Peters Township Police Department Policy Manual.
So what is for consideration for council tonight is an amendment to the Policy Manual. These policies have been circulated to council and/or the solicitor, and they have been reviewed. It's my recommendation that, that council take action to adopt them. This will leave probably four or five additional policies that still need to be promulgated. It will be adopted next year. It'll be the first step towards accreditation of the police department.
I'll make a motion that we adopt Resolution Number 120118, amending the Peters Township Police Department Policy Manual.
Second.
All right. Motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. I believe that was seven to zero. Next is the ordinance amending Chapter 410 Vehicles and Traffic of the Peters Township Code of Ordinances.
One of the housekeeping tasks that we do each year is to update the construct of ordinances that relates to traffic control, setting speed limits, and establishing stop intersections. That's what you see in front of you tonight, and it's my recommend, recommendation that council adopt ordinance 833.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I have a question. Are these just new things?
Yes.
Okay, so like when we, when we talked about putting that extra stop sign up on Sugar Camp, that has nothing to do with this?
That has nothing to do with this. We have yet to hear back from Penn dot as to a decision. We know they're in receipt of the request. They have not yet taken action on that.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Aye.
Seven to zero. Next, ordinance levying a tax on the assessed value of real property located in Peters Township for 2019.
Okay, this is the first of a, a few ordinances that deal with the 2019 budget. What's being proposed is that the real estate tax mileage at 1.622 mils remain the same as it was in 2018.
And, and just so it's clear, what does that equate to on $100,000, $162,000?
That is a dollar sixty-two a thousand?
For a thousand dollars of assessment.
Because I know I read that article in the Post Gazette and it had it at like $1,600 for a thousand. I told, I called Paul and told him, I'm moving it. It's 16, probably 1600 on, you know, each $100,000, you know?
I move council to adopt ordinance 834 establishing a tax levy of 1.622 mil on the assessed value of real property in Peters Township.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Seven to zip. Next, ordinance adopting the 2019 Peters Township Operating Budget.
We've spent a lot of time in developing the budget between council and staff. And, and I think what we have is a very prudent, but aggressive plan for, for next year. And I, I think it does reflect not only the needs, but the desires of the, of the township. And, you know, and therefore, it's my recommendation that council adopt ordinance 835, establishing the 2019 operating budget.
We move we adopt ordinance 835, establishing township operating budget.
Second.
Any further comments or discussion?
Well, I think you have to warrant what we're doing with expenditures versus revenues with the concept of later in the year, the bond issue to cover some of these capital expenses.
Yes. One of the things that we need to do early in 2019 is we know that we have committed to certain capital improvements, particularly with the development of Rolling Hills Drive and the intersections associated with that, that we will have to go out and borrow additional funds. One of the things that I think we need to firmly establish is what our plan for the development of the park. And based upon that, it will define the, the size and scope of that bond issue. So, but, but you're correct. What you see is what appears to be a budget that is unbalanced. What it presupposes is that, that we are gonna finance a portion of those expenditures with, with long-term debt.
I'm glad that Mr. Lewis brought that up because I think the other thing that people need to understand is that we try to be conservative in our revenue projections with the idea of how our income tax has done better. We try to be conscientious about what we're projecting and not overprojecting for revenue or underprojecting expenses. But I think it also presupposes that knowing what we did, we're going to keep a close eye on the expenditures. We're trying to manage those closely. So I'm glad Mr. Lewis brought that up because it looks as if we're better approving an unbalanced budget, but we do have expectations of being able to meet our needs.
Yes, and I think the other thing that is that there, you know, over the years, the township gathers funds from its traffic impact fee program. We have now accumulated about a million dollars in funds, and those funds will be used to offset some of those expenditures as well.
Okay. Again, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Seven to zero. Next item, ordinance adopting the 2019, 2023 Peters Township Capital Improvement Program.
The General Charter requires that the, the council will develop and adopt a five-year plan for capital improvements. One of the things I've included in your doc, it is a listing of the projects that are to be funded in 2000, that are funded in 2019. I, I will tell you, I think it's going to be a busy year for the township in terms of being able to accomplish all the tasks that we have set aside. But, you know, I think one of the things that the staff has been able to demonstrate is that we're up to that kind of challenge. And so therefore, I, you know, it's my recommendation that council adopt ordinance 836, establishing the 2019, 2023 Capital Improvement Program.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Seven to zero. And the last item under new business, ordinance establishing the 2019 Peters Township Pay Plan governing full-time and part-time administrative employees.
So one of the, one of the things that we do normally on an annual basis is to adjust the pay plan that affects non-unionized employees. If you recollect, the last time there was an adjustment on this plan was in August of 2017 when we took action based upon the study that was done. So this, these, this plan hasn't been updated for some time. There are multiple components to the plan. One of them is, that is rather static, is that every position within Peters Township is assigned a pay grade. That normally doesn't change, and nor is there a, any proposal to change that. What does change from year to year is the pay range is associated with each of the, with each of the pay grades. And what's being recommended is that the existing pay plan, which was set in August of 2017, be increased by 2.75%. And if you look at that on an annualized basis, it comes out to an increase of about 2.1% annually. All union plans are increasing probably, are increasing at a minimum of 2.5% for, for next year. The one exception, well, I, the two exceptions to this relate to the pay grades associated with the Public Works Director, the Fire Chief, which is a pay grade four, and the Deputy Fire Chief of pay grade five. Based upon appeal, Personnel Appeals Committee that was approved by council, there was, there was agreement to increase the midpoint for pay grade four to that $90,000, which is in excess of the 2.5%. My suggestion is that we also adjust pay grade five as well to keep it in line so that the Deputy Fire Chief's position, which we're gonna try to be filling in January or February, will stay in line with that of the Fire Chief. So based upon that, that's my recommendation.
All right. Anyone who want to make a motion?
I'd like to make a comment first.
All right.
I have said this in the past when we've talked about payroll and pay scale, and I have no problem with increasing the pay scale. I'm not sure that we need to increase both the minimum and the top end. I would prefer to increase the top end and then adjust the midpoint, keeping the minimum salary that what it was. I don't think that we're either paying for entry level. And when you do hire someone, I'm not sure how many people have gone in at entry level.
Some are.
Some are, but in the course of my tenure, there are very few who have been, from what I've known. On the other hand, you know, I'm not saying that we don't need to pay fairly. I think that we do. I think we have that pay philosophy, but I think there's a lot of other things besides pay that affect how people make employment decisions. So I have no problem adjusting the upper level, but I would prefer to have a conversation about this with this particular juncture because I don't think we need to adjust the minimum.
And if I could just caution you one thing about not adjusting the minimum. We went years without adjusting the minimum. And when you do that, what eventually happens is that that pay range becomes something that is so out of whack that it makes it difficult for us to use it when we advertise for a position because people look at it and they see a minimum starting salary that is so far below what the market is. I mean, if you did that this year, I don't think it's the end of the world. But if you continue, and we did this, we did it year after year after year, and those minimum numbers became so low, we couldn't even use them in ads because I think it would discourage qualified candidates from even looking at township.
I don't disagree with the idea that you need to keep the minimum at a set number forever and ever and ever. All I'm saying is I don't think, since we just did this a year and a half ago, I don't...
know that it needs to be adjusted now, and I do believe that, first of all, I don't know that you have to advertise a salary range or a specific salary in an ad, and I think you need to pay commence for living spirits, so I'm not arguing the point of bringing people in above minimum when they're qualified to do above minimum work. So I'm just, it's my, my opinion on the pay scale. I will have to tell you that the comments you made about adjusting the mid-range, that particular number was nowhere in my memory, so I might be the only one who does remember.
Well, that, that, with regard to pay grade number four, that specifically, what was discussed?
We discussed incremental adjustments.
Oh, no, no, you're absolutely correct in this, and this is the other part of it, you know, this has no impact on what people get paid, and what, as a result of that decision, what I told council we would do, and then that's in fact what we're doing, is that we're doing incremental increases over a long period of time, as opposed to one adjustment to that individual salary, and so that's what we're in the process of.
Okay. Well, I'll move that we adopt ordinance number 837, establishing the 2019 Peters Township Pay Plan.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Nay.
That would be six to one.
I have a question, Mr. Law. Can, can we entertain, can I make a motion that we don't review this pay plan increases for at least a period of two years? Or is that something that has to be on the agenda?
Well, it can be whenever you want it to be, what we have in the past done is to look at this annually. I don't have a problem if you want to do that, as long as you understand that when it's two years, the increase isn't, may not be, you know, 2%, that's, that's, that's the only challenge.
I'm not saying I'm making a motion, I'm just saying, if, if we're going to review this every year, we have the option not to...
Oh, you have the option not to do anything with it, and we will manage it within whatever the pay plan is at the time.
I don't know that the next two years have any focus ability of where we're headed with the economy, so I don't have it.
There are a lot of things that go into making up a pay plan or a pay philosophy for a company, and some of which is the economy, some of which is the current staff and the existing conditions of the township. Obviously, you know, Peters Townshipism or Townshipism or equal to pay people. On the other hand, if we had some economic problems or we had some issues, maybe that couldn't happen. So everything that goes into them on an annual basis has to be considered.
Absolutely.
And so I'm not saying we don't have to look at it every year, I just think we need to look at it in the context of our scope of points.
I disagree.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is payroll and bills.
Mr. Chairman, I reviewed the voluminous stack of payroll and bills, found everything to be in order, I make a motion that we approve the same.
Is that a second day?
Okay, second day.
Okay. Any comments from council? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Seven to zero, correspondence, there is none. Anyone want to make any comments regarding reports?
I would like to.
All right.
If you turn to page 153 of our doc at PDF, you'll see in the fire report, average number of firefighter responders down in the center column in the box. That is very, very concerning. We're looking at last year's record of having six responders available for each of the three rotational shifts. Eleven to seven, 2018, there've been only two, and I know we're taking steps to rectify that, but that certainly is a reason to, you know, warrant the rectification.
And one of the things, though, that I, I need to follow up, so that we can have a, a discussion about this, to, my understanding is, one of the things that the fire department's attempting to do is to adjust the response to calls that don't warrant more people to be there, so that in fact, when, when you need a crew of people there, they're there, as opposed to having multiple people going out for carbon, what's it, carbon monoxide calls or, or alarm, so let me follow up with that. I don't get the answer.
If this is an average of two, there can't be a very wide spread between how many would respond to a, an active fire.
I think that Paul's right, I know, when I was, when I was at the fire department, it got to the point where the tenants were going off for every medical, every little thing, and going all the night, and it just got to be too much, so I turned the pager off, there was a house fire, I didn't know.
And one of the things, and again, I don't know where they're at in this process, they were going to be able to distinguish between critical calls and routine calls.
It's not difficult, worst of any doesn't, I don't know why there's a continuous hesitation, I don't know if that's, will somehow force the other members out.
And as, as we talked earlier, when something happens in the township, all three departments respond, the ambulance, the police, and the fire, so maybe there is some way to give them a reprieve on the less than critical situations.
Well, it's, it's something that I think draws attention and potential, you need to focus on what's going on.
But on the flip side, you now have more volunteers in the fire department than we have had for years and years and years.
And that's great.
Yes, no, that's, that's really good.
Compared to all the news articles we read across the nation or the, the government of the...
Yeah, exactly.
Tremendous decline, so. It might even help us, because, you know, when the government will throw, will throw money at it, we'll get even more volunteers.
Okay, any else in the reports?
I would just like to recognize Mr. Ryan Voney, who just showed his value by coming out and saving us, he is celebrating his 20th anniversary, and we should say congratulations.
Is that a wedding, or is that...
That's 20 years of work.
Yes.
Peters Township. Who knows nothing about that.
Okay. Anything else? Viscillaneous or board attendance?
It's in the docket, if anybody has a question or concern.
Where are we with knowing who wants to be reappointed? Have you received all responses?
We're in the, we're in that process of knowing that, I don't know that yet, you will have that for January 7th.
And as far as the staff liaising, if there are people that they recommend should not be reappointed, or you need to be asked not to stay on, we should probably know that.
You will.
And one last thing, we do know we have openings because of some unfortunate loss of board members, so we should probably maybe advertise that if council agrees, that we try to get that out fairly early. I did have a question, talking about fire departments, there's no flag at the B-ball Sugar Camp Firehouse, what happened?
I don't know.
There is none there that I can see.
I don't know, I'll have to check.
I appreciate it, thanks.
All right, any items for the next agenda?
The reorganization?
Yes, on January 7th.
All right, I would just like to comment, the usually dapper, Mr. Lewis looks exceptionally dapper tonight.
Usually you cover around my case because I won't put a tie on.
A posture. Nicely done. All right, other than, anybody else?
I'd really like to congratulate you, because without my presence last week, you managed to get out of here in less than 30 minutes.
It was totally noted. This meeting is adjourned.